We're live in one minute, live in one minute. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, we're live.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome you to the February 6th, 2012 Morganton City Council Meeting. Thank you for being here, it's been a special afternoon and a special evening because we're going to send Steve off into retirement land a little bit later on. But at this time, I'd like to call on Sheldon Stevenson to lead us with our invocation, Steve.
Well, there's a special event for Steve, I'd like to have him remember that he needs the Lord in the future and to recite with me the 23rd Psalm. And I invite everybody to join me if you would do that, please, and may we say together the 23rd Psalm. "The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want; He maketh me to lie down in green pastures; He leads me beside the still waters; He restores my soul; He leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for His name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for Thou art with me; Thy rod and Thy staff they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of mine enemies; Thou anointest my head with oil; My cup runs over; surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." May we pray. Dear Lord God, we do pray. We are grateful for your presence with us now and always. And now for helping to make this a special occasion for Steve Settlemire. We bow and give you thanks for Steve. For the contribution he has made to the city of Morganton. To the city council. To his church, to his family. We are grateful, Lord, for his faith in thee. For his steadfastness. For his everyday knowledge. For his decision-making skills, Lord. As he goes forth into this next step. Of his meaning-filled life. With his lovely wife Marilyn. We pray. And know that you'll go with him. And you will make his life wonderful. And beautiful. And richly rewarding. And strongly challenging. Amen.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve, for those words. The good Lord knows how to separate the wheat from the chaff, however.
Introduction of our city council, on my far right is Dr. Alfred Hamer, city councilman, and Forest Fleming, city councilman, Steve Settlemire, our city attorney. I'm Mel Cohen, mayor, Sally Sandy, city manager, Sidney Simmons, city councilman, John Cantrell, city councilman, Kelly Russell, recording secretary, and Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community. Again, I want to welcome each and every one of you here, we've got a good crowd today, we had a big crowd outside a while ago, so thank you for being here. At this time, I'd like to read a resolution honoring the retirement of Joseph V. Vance. Joe, where are you at? Just if you would, just come up to the podium, I'll be up there in a minute. Resolution honoring Joseph V. Vance, whereas Joe V. Vance was employed by the city of Morganton as a pipe mechanic in the Water Resources Department on June 23rd, 2003. Changed to senior distribution and collection system operator on July 1st, 2004. And changed to senior plant maintenance mechanic on September 4th, 2007. And whereas Joe V. Vance has faithfully served, the city of Morganton and the Water Resources Department has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for nine years. And whereas Joseph V. Vance retired from the city of Morganton as senior plant maintenance mechanic in the Water Resources Department on February 1st, 2012. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Joseph V. Vance and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Joseph V. Vance, adopted this the 6th day of February, 2012. Mel Cohen, mayor, Sally Sandy, city clerk, form of a motion, guys. Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you for all you've done.
Appreciate it.
Say anything, you're welcome. Where's Tamara? There she is, Tamara, you want to come over here to the... Resolution honoring Tamara L. Souther. Whereas Tamara L. Souther was employed by the city of Morganton as Secretary 2 in the Public Safety Department Director's Office on August 1st, 1988. Transferred to Personnel Analyst in the Personnel Department on August 4th, 1997. Position title changed to Human Resources Analyst on December 30th, 2003. And promoted to Administrative Manager in the Recreation Department on September 3rd, 2005. And whereas Tamara L. Souther has faithfully served the city of Morganton and the Recreation Department has given of retirement efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 30 years and three months. And whereas Tamara L. Souther is retired from the city of Morganton as Administrative Manager in the Recreation Department on February 1st, 2012. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Tamara L. Souther and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Tamara L. Souther. Adopted this the 6th day of February, 2012. Mel Cohen, mayor, Sally Sandy, city clerk, form of a motion. All in favor, say aye. Tamara, get your staff. Did I get to keep the check?
Sure.
Thank you for all you've done. And lay this here and that, and you're welcome to say anything you'd like to say, Tamara.
It's emotional time for me, but I want to thank the city council, Sally, Steve, Major Wisniewski, and Gary Lindhart for giving me the opportunity to work for the city. It's been, it's a great ride, but I'm excited about spending time with my family now. But I am going to miss it, there's no doubt about it. But thank you very much, I appreciate everything.
Thank you, Tamara. Now, I was going to let Sally do Steve Settlemire, but she is... She's refrained from doing it, and I want to, Steve, I want to... Is this a service weapon that you also...
I hope not. I hope not.
City of Morganton, North Carolina, a resolution for the Morganton, of the Morganton City Council honoring Steve B. Settlemire upon his retirement as city attorney. Whereas Steve B. Settlemire has served as city attorney of the city of Morganton since January 1978. Beginning as a private attorney and becoming a city employee on June, in June 1998. And whereas after 34 years of service, Steve B. Settlemire has announced his intention to retire as Morganton City Attorney effective March 1, 2012. With his final city council meeting being on February 6th, tonight, 2012. And whereas during his long service to the city of Morganton, Steve has played a significant role in numerous city projects and initiatives that had led to improvements in the city that have been benefited by all of our citizens. And whereas Steve's wise counsel and advice have been heavily relied upon by mayors, city council members, city managers, and city employees throughout his 34 years of service. And whereas in addition to all his professional abilities and contributions, Steve has been a caring friend to those he has worked with and recently characterized in the News-Hurl, Morganton News-Hurl, as a lawyer you can actually like. More, read that again. As a lawyer you can actually like. And whereas it is the desire of the Morganton City Council to officially recognize Steve B. Settlemire for his many contributions to the city of Morganton as he ends his career as city attorney. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Morganton, on behalf of the citizens of Morganton and the employees of the city of Morganton, that the mayor and council members extend to Steve B. Settlemire their sincere appreciation for all his contributions to the betterment of the city of Morganton over these past 34 years. And be it further resolved that the mayor and council members extend to Steve their sincere best wishes for a healthy, happy, and well-deserved retirement to be enjoyed with Marilyn and all the Settlemire family. Adopted this the 7th day of February, 2012. Mel Cohen, mayor, Sally Sandy, city clerk, in the form of a motion. Steve, I said a lot out there, but this is for the record, this is on, for the citizens of Morganton, to know that you have been a blessing. You have been a tremendous asset to this community and the region. I know personally the people that have called you and city attorneys and city councilmen and the advice you've given them on, over the years, on many different things. Your position you have held strong and with integrity on many issues. And one, the first being cable during a very hectic time in our history in the city of Morganton. And I just, I'm overwhelmed to know all that you've done to contribute to the betterment of our community. And I want to say Godspeed and God bless you. Did I make a motion on this?
Yeah.
You did, and we got a second.
We got a second. All in favor, say aye. Okay, but if there's anything you'd like to say, because it's, again, it's a time that, very emotional for a lot of us.
Well. I've been blessed. I told you out there, and I tell you from the bottom of my heart. Blessings aren't always seen, but somehow someone led me down Interstate 75 from Detroit, Michigan, down here. And told me to take a left in Knoxville. Come across Interstate 40, and if Marilyn were still sitting here, she had to take my granddaughter Harper out. She would tell you that when we reached the Tennessee-North Carolina line, she looked over at me and said, "We're home," in 1973. It was a blessing to move here in 1973. I've enjoyed raising my family. I couldn't have picked, and I didn't pick without the good Lord's help, a better place to live in the entire world than right here with this group of people. I've enjoyed working with a lot of different members of the city council over the years. The city has a wonderful staff. It's a team effort at the city. No one person does anything, but lots of people accomplish a great deal. I know that citizens get upset over things sometimes. And I know that we don't make every right decision and do everything right at the city. But from the inside of this operation, I know that the department heads, the city employees that do the work out in the streets every day of their life, they are making an honest, best effort to serve the people of Morganton. And I couldn't have picked a better place to work. This has been a great place to work, great friends here at the city, great people to work with. And I'm going to not miss the work so much, but I am going to miss the people a whole lot, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. God bless you. This is real watch and a check to me when I, we... If you don't take it, I will.
Why, how come you get it at your seat?
Public advocacy issues and strategies, I don't know of anything tonight. Municipal power agency number one, Sally?
Nothing at this time.
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda before you tonight actually includes five individual items. And the staff considers those items to be routine and non-controversial in nature. Would ask that the council consider approving those in one motion unless there's someone on the counselor in the audience that would like to have an item discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, I will go over the items. Those are regular minutes from the January 9th, 2012 meeting. Tax releases and the amount of $28.90. The approval of establishing April the 4th, 2012, as the date for advertising unpaid real estate taxes. The approval of the schedule of events at Cotabah Meadows for 2012. And then finally, an agreement to pursue a regional partnership that in the future would develop a hazard mitigation plan that all of the counties and municipalities in the region would participate in.
Okay, I make a motion and we accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Okay, appearances, Mr. Roper. Microphone right there. You're on.
I didn't know I was going to be called this soon, or I would have been ready.
Take your time.
I need to get some glasses out, I can read with you. I am Joey Eddie Roper. I have known city councilman Simmons for 53 years. I have known retired councilman Westnut for longer. I didn't believe, I don't believe that either one of these will say that they ever heard me tell a lie. I am here tonight to tell the truth. I believe that I have enough facts that the city council should honor my request. I'm wearing two pair of glasses probably tonight because mine were broke last Monday. Kelly Russell said I had probably 10 to 15 minutes. I'll try to be throwing about seven or eight. I was falsely arrested last Monday, January 30th, 2012. Tonight, I am accusing the Morganton Police Department with plute brutality and unnecessary roughness. I am 75 years old and have physical problems. Rotary cuff is ruptured and torn in my left arm. Dr. Hamer is a medical doctor, and I am sure that he can identify with me when I tell you the following statements about my left arm. My right arm is fine. The palm will go up, left arm, the palm will go about this far. I can bend the left arm just like I can the right arm, but that's about as high as my left arm will go. Right arm will go on up. My right arm will go over my head, the left one, that's here. When I take my right arm, I can place it all the way across my back. Take my left arm, that is as far as it will go. But when you take something that won't move any farther, you're going to be a breakage or injury follower. That being said. My bicep is pulled loose in my right arm. I cannot show you that because I have long sleeves on. Balance and walking is unstable. My doctor told me that every joint in my body was wore out. And he was supposed to have my report ready to bring tonight, but he didn't get it to me. Police officer Kim Davis ordered me out of my vehicle at gunpoint. I am no threat to anyone. I am as well-known in Morganton as Mel Cohen, Sidney Simmons, Alfred Hamer. Officer Davis is talking to me all, and all at once, she said, "You are under arrest." She put the handcuffs on me so tight that both my wrists were cut, bruised, and bleeding. I still have two large cuts on my left arm, small one on my wrist, and a small one on my right wrist. This wasn't enough, so Officer Davis and I, I was told four other officers, but the paper said one. Wasn't anything in the paper that told the truth. One other officer helped her slam me face down, face first, on the hood of a police car with body injuries, especially my left shoulder. I had a doctor examine all my injuries Tuesday morning. X-ray showed that I might need surgery on my left shoulder. You can remember, well, at several, most of my life, I have had problems, 75 years with Morganton Police Department. There's two occasions, I'm not going into details, but I'm going to say I had problems on two different occasions with two officers that after I filed a complaint with city hall, they wasn't with the city much longer. I don't know whether left under pressure, whether left under choice, but I followed both of these to their new jobs. One went to Hendersonville, I went to Hendersonville, talked to police chief and sergeant Yocke, and filed another report up there against this officer. So I'm not here tonight blowing steam, I just wanted you to know, I will follow up on what I say I will do. I respectfully ask the city council to fire Officer Kim Davis. To obtain the names of the other officers that helped her in the brutal attack and fire them. To place my complaints in all their files so it will be hard for them to get another job. For an internal investigation into this matter and the police department be placed under strict guidelines. If the chief can't handle a decent respectful police department, then maybe he needs to be replaced. No one needs to be treated as I was, and especially at 75 years of age. What joy or reward do they get out of beating up a 75-year-old man? Sure, I wrestled and held two wrestling championship titles two years in a row, 55 years ago. I challenge any council member to look at me and see at my age and my physical handicaps and that, that I'm any threat to anyone. If you lined every officer at the scene last Monday up in this room and asked one question, "Did you see Mr. Roper with a gun?" Every officer, if they told the truth, would say no. The gun came out of my van for the first time when Officer Davis had me at gunpoint, and another officer took it out of my van. I have witnesses that saw the whole thing from start to finish. I classify this as one false arrest. I'm going to tell you a story right now, true story. None of this is coming from me. It's coming from a person that came up to my wife at the scene. She came up to my wife and said, "Do you know those men?" My wife said, "Yes, one's my husband, one's my son." That person said, "I saw it all." I don't wise at Mighty Dollar, I don't trade at Mighty Dollar. I don't wise at the van, but I happened to be beside the van. I happened to look over, and if that's your son, your husband and son was talking. The man, this man's pointed to Mr. Nichols sitting up on the steps. He came over to your husband, threatened him, started hitting him with a bag of objects that he had probably purchased in Mighty Dollar. He told your husband that he would kill him. Your husband reached in to his van, came out with a canister of mace. By this time, the gentleman's retreating across the parking lot, hollering, "I'll go to my car, I'll get my gun, and I'll kill you." Your husband got in his van to leave, he was stopped by the woman, police officer. She told him to get out of the van, put his arms out the window, he did, as she instructed. He got out, and after she talked to him, tried to put his arm behind him, I've done showed you how far my left arm ago. And she said, "You're under arrest." She was grabbing that left arm, jerking on it, it wouldn't go. I found out after listening to him, she charged him with resisting arrest. He did not resist arrest, is what this person is telling my wife. And so as far as the gun's concerned, there was no gun. I saw it all from the very beginning to the very end. This man did not need to be treated the way that he was treated. He was physically abused, throwed around, and he hadn't done anything. That's, I'm through with the witness now. I was handcuffed and unthroated on the hood of a police car. Anyone with a good common sense knows a 75-year-old man would not resist with about, I'm guessing, 10 or 12 officers present. That is my second accusation, second false arrest accusation against the police department. The officers got in a huddle, and I saw them talking, I don't know, four or five of them. And I've got 20 years in law enforcement, and I know how officers will get in a huddle and start talking. After, middle of the week, long towards the middle of the week, I was talking to a retired law enforcement officer. And he told me, and it was a very thing, thing that I was thinking, he said, "Mr. Roper, I'm going to tell you what they're doing. They saw that they had handcuffed you, your wrists were cut and bleeding, and they had to cover their tracks. So they said, 'Rest that man for something.'" That's what I'm thinking tonight. They thought they had to rest me for something, and they did. Officer Davis kept telling me to put my hands up, "Put your hands on your head." I told her over and over, couldn't raise my left arm. Is this her version of resisting arrest? You were lucky this time. The next time, you might be burying a senior citizen. A man has threatened to kill my son and me three times. One time at my son's house, one time pulling a gun on us at the Jamestown Car Auction. The Morganton Police Department came up, handcuffed the man, took the man's gun, and in a few minutes, took the handcuffs off, gave him his gun back, said, "We can't do anything," and let him leave. Monday, I got out of my van to go into a store shopping. Eddie Nichols had nothing to do with me being at that store. I didn't know it was anywhere's around. The Mighty Dollar managers tell me that I'm the best customer they got. So I frequent that store every day, every other day, twice a day, or whatever. Now you know the rest from the witness, what happened, what really happened after that. I get in my van to leave, and I'm stopped. I am the victim, but I got beat up, arrested, and was taken to jail for no reason. I hadn't done anything. I am not a fifth-grade dropout. I have attended four colleges and hold 10 diplomas or degrees. I have enough sense to know not to resist 12 officers. Both charges are lies, and I should have never been arrested. My son tells me, after I get out of jail that evening, then another witness comes up and tells him word for word what happened. I haven't stood here and told you what happened. I'm telling what other witnesses told, and it's the truth from the beginning to the end. This person gave my son their name, phone number, I did not recognize the person's name. They said they couldn't believe the way that I was treated and knocked around, beat around. You are elected to serve the people. You need to control the police department and not abuse the people. Fire these officers that make up your roughneck team. I read in the paper about every day or so, so much resisting an officer. Why does Morganton have so much resisting an officer? What do they call resisting an officer? They're taking a 75-year-handicapped man that can't put his arm over his head, throw him around, throw his arm behind him all the time. And Dr. Hamer will have to agree with me, with the rotary cuff rupture, you have got pain, you have got limited movement of your arm. What do they constitute as resisting an officer? You know why that I'm the only one here tonight complaining, these other people don't come up and complain to the city council? There's two reasons. One is they are afraid of the establishment. The other, they have no money. I'm telling you, I'm not in either one of those categories. You'll go to bed tonight, you'll get up in the morning, but this won't go away. Joey Eddie Roper will still be right here in Morganton. And this incident is not going away. Now I'd like to... Now I'd like to go back to the police report that's in the news whirl. The argument was in parking lot of Autozone. That's a lie across parking lot, parking lot of Mighty Dollar. Joe Roper, she instructed Joe Roper to stick his hands out the window of the vehicle instead of complying according to the release. He began cursing the officer and stepped out of the van. Well, if I didn't comply, how could I be stepping out? Now, cursing, what do you call cursing? Using profanity? I'm seventy-five years old, I don't curse. I won't go to heaven when I die. I don't have many more days on this earth. And that's another thing, if I was guilty, I'd go up there and plead guilty, pay it, and say, "Okay, I'm seventy-five. When am I gonna die? Seventy-seven, two more years." But by mere buckiness, or whatever you wanna call it, fighting it, I might be helping somebody else down the line that gets treated the same way that I have been treated. No, I'm not, I'm not gonna take it. So I stepped out of my van, you saw when I got up. It takes me a few minutes to regroup, get my stability. She attempted to handcuff Roper, and he tried to pull away, the release said. Then Officer Maury Cowan had to assist her. I was told there was five, four or five, I don't know. All I know that his sister's are all right. They blindsided me from behind, threw me over the hood of a police car, and then started to jerk me up, and when they started to jerk me up, me hollering, "Whoa, whoa, take it easy, don't jerk me up and all," it was in pain. Somebody, the joints were out from head, neck, wherever, to the toes, they're gonna have some pain. I did not jerk away from Officer Davis. I might have flinched. You know what flinch means? It means that you draw away from pain. And if anyone else in this room has a rotary cuff that had been torn or ruptured, you know what I'm talking about when you're talking about pain in your rotary cuff. I might have flinched, but I wasn't jerking around, trying to fight, trying to get away from them. If I'd, I don't remember where I said this while going up when I was talking about the wrestling, if I'd been ten years ago, fifty-five years ago, they could have probably rested me for resisting arrest and a few other things at that time, because the way it happened, it just wasn't right, and I just wouldn't have tucked it back in probably. The release said Joe Roper arrived a short time later. Let's talk about after Eric Nichols arrived there. I didn't know Eric Nichols was there. Didn't know he was on Prince. If I did, I'd have went on, because a man has threatened to kill us three times, three times with a gun. The first, second time, he pulled his gun on us at the car auction up on Jamestown Road. Police, Morgan Police, didn't know a thing about it, but I paid taxes here ever since I've been old enough all my life. I stepped out of my van, vehicle, carrying a gun, following Nichols into Mighty Dollar. Now the man, the management of Mighty Dollar liked me, but they're not gonna stand there and say, "Hey Joe, what's doing in here with a gun? What, are you gonna follow that man out and shoot him?" How many calls did they get, the Police Department get from Mighty Dollar, and a man was in there with a gun? Not a one. So Mighty Dollar's gonna let a man carry a gun, walk around in there? I, I don't think so. So, "No, I didn't have a gun. I didn't follow him in there. I didn't ever get in Mighty Dollar." He come out, and my son and I were talking, and he jumped on me. He's gonna kill me right there again, third time, in the parking lot. Says then he walked across the lot and went to the Mighty Dollar while I was still following him with the gun, according to the release. Then he came out, and Joe Roper sprayed him. Okay, the only thing that I do not tell you that this witness said she didn't see him. When he was standing there, he had a bulge in the front of his pants, same as he did at the auction that night, where he had his gun, carrying his gun. I saw that bulge, and I thought, I don't know, he probably still had that gun in the front of his pants. When David Oaks was elected sheriff of Burke County, I was offered the chief deputy's job. I was offered a police chief's job at Drexel several times. In closing, I wanna say, if I was in a position of police chief or chief deputy, and I had officers under me that would write such a police report, it was in the paper about me, I would have them writing at Walmart. They would be gone. I appreciate your time, and I still respectfully ask you fire these officers. Internal investigation, and it's not gonna be over in the morning, because it's gonna go on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Roper.
Mr. Mayor, there's no action for the council to take tonight on this matter. I've been briefed on the issue, was briefed on the issue immediately after it happened. Mr. Roper certainly has his point of view. That's the reason we have courts. If he wants to take it to court, that's his prerogative, and they can resolve the matter in court, because that's where disputes of this nature ought to be resolved, not here in front of the City Council at a public meeting. Needless to say, the officers and a lot of the witnesses have an entirely different account of events down there, so perhaps we'll leave it at that tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Scott Darnell, Burke Economic Development Incorporated.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mayor, Council. It's great to be here in Morganton tonight. And Mr. Settlemaw, congratulations. I wish you the best going forward. Wanted to give you an update on, you know, the last year at Burke Development, as well as some things we're doing this year already. We do have a closed session tonight, so let's just talk about some new opportunities and look forward to doing that soon. Geiger, Herman, Miller, Ice River Springs, Case Farms, Ekronis Caterpillar, and American Roller Bearing, all chose to either expand or locate in Burke County in 2011. The results out of those expansions or location, the Phase One was close to 500 jobs, the Phase Two could be up to 700 jobs. That represented a close to $65 million investment among those firms. The incentives from the state level or grants associated with those projects come to close to $5.5 million. For every dollar our organization received from taxpayers throughout Burke County, $18 was leveraged for these projects and state grant and other resources. That's important to know that, you know, we're not only using our resources effectively, but we're using other people's resources effectively as well. The payroll of these at our average manufacturing wage, close to $15 million. In those 500 jobs, we're confident most of them will be filled within the next eighteen months. So these are immediate results that we'll see over the next eighteen months. Of those projects, 547,000 square feet of real estate space was put back in use. Those are buildings that aren't being vandalized, they're back in use using utilities, as well as, you know, creating value for the companies that are occupying them. You know, I would like to point out, the Ekronis project, pretty unique, is the, was on 115 One Sutter Mill Road. It's a 100,000 square foot facility built in 1981, is a former furniture plant. Ekronis is a furniture company, is the leading furniture brand for Norway, and probably some of the most expensive furniture you'll ever see, but a very reputable global brand. When we first started working with the project, you know, we had a building that had a lot wrong with it. We used technology and convinced Ekronis that this community had what it takes to put that building not only back in use, but to their standards. That included 12,000 square feet of offices, a new showroom where they'll have the North American Sales Distribution Network come to the city to preview. It's got men and women locker rooms, including showers for the employees, conference areas, server rooms to host servers for the North American Sales, you know, manufacturing functions, as long as we had, as well as replacing upgrades in mechanical, electrical, and all the systems, down to the lighting, everything had to be placed, replaced in the plant, including the new HVAC system to distribute air more effectively. It was a complete overhaul, the challenge was we had to do it within 90 days. We had tight timelines, we're using a construction management process, one we'd never done on a project this small. We rehab an existing facility, which is considerably more risk than building a new one. I think you'll attest to that using this building. And Hendrick Construction, PWA Architects, and Allied Consulting Engineers, very well-respected firms in the Charlotte market, were chosen to be a part of that team, and it exceeded our expectation and the clients doing that. To complicate matters worse is there was Schedule A and Schedule B. Schedule A was the building, Schedule B was meeting the demands of Ekronis with finishes down to elevated server farms and the rest, floors all the way through. One of the things that Hendrick had commented on, I'd love to read you a letter from their project manager, was the cooperation on behalf of your city staff for this project. The, the core threat to any project's a couple of things. One is weather, can't control that, but it was inside. The other threat was to do a project this quick with this type of systems and a lot of new technologies, you couldn't do it upfront, you had to do it as you go. And that required an above and beyond commitment of the city inspector, and here's a testament to his hard work on this project. From Bill Stewart, the project manager on the project from Hendrick Construction. Dear Scott, I want to express our appreciation for the cooperation and assistance given to us by your code review and inspectors on Project Charlie, which was Ekronis. As you know, this was an extremely fast-paced project, and without their assistance, we've never delivered the building on time. Your inspector was willing to accommodate our tough schedule and help us succeed. Our site superintendent commented on numerous occasions that the code enforcement inspection staff were extremely professional and knowledgeable. We have never had a project in Burke County before, but we would, we look forward to working there again. Sincerely, Bill Stewart, Hendrick Construction. From an economic development perspective, incentives and a lot of things we hear about in the public are important, and they're a part of that, but knowing this community has hundreds of million dollars of construction, either starting or about to begin, knowing from a well-respected contractor, they got that kind of treatment here, gives even a bigger selling tool to companies looking here. Everybody's got, you know, fast permitting, everybody's got a friendly staff, but not many of those communities can show the letters or show the proof that it was actually backed up. And Ekronis and your staff, you know, really went above and beyond, and these are well-respected firms in the Charlotte market doing this every day, and to have that, it's not only a testament to Ekronis making that success, but these other companies are continuing to look here, as well as the great projects we have underway. So, you know, remember the great commitment of Mike and his team, and we really appreciated that, and it made us look good, but, you know, Mike made the project look good, so we appreciate Moving on, on the, some of the marketing updates, we're continuing to work in more with our economic development partners, not only increases our resources, but expands our reach. A part of that's when Electric Cities Economic Development's team, especially Conley Hilliard, he's a very seasoned economic developer, but at the same time, they've got a lot of resources we've been utilizing, marketing trips, one-on-one, and he does a great job promoting the Electric Cities brand, as well as the utility potential there. Other things we're looking at is the business part. A lot's been known recently, email blasts are going out with Advantage West, we have our own email blasts are starting, new brochures are developed, and we're having conference calls regarding the marketing of that. They're set every two weeks to follow up on different opportunities, so we're confident the success will continue on that project. A project that really came out of a lot of these new jobs was, how do we upgrade the skills for these new technologies of these different firms? And in a partnership with Community College was Project Renew, did a, does a couple of things. Trains those with skill gaps in an expedited timeframe. It also allows those in organizations, the Caterpillar's arrest, that have opportunities to move up, they're open to them as well. It is the only workforce development type of program we know of in North Carolina that recognizes temporary employees in these plants and lets them take advantage of that training, which hasn't been done in the past. That program is starting, the, the great thing is this partnership moved quick. It programmed from conception to start was about 90 days, which in a workforce development system is almost warp speed. And the Rural Center was gracious enough to give us a grant to fund it, so we're excited to see that start, and many of our partners, Roller Bearing and the rest, are gonna be a part of that program going forward. You know, lastly, the Business Retention Expansion Program, you know, we still put a lot of priority on seeing the companies here. There's a lot of good successes we'll be talking about in closed session, but at the same time, we have a program called Celebrate Burke Business, and y'all have been a part of, where we go and thank the employees of the plant more than anything for making the commitment to working in Burke County, and we'll continue that here this spring. But a lot of good things have happened in 2011, but you know, now we're in 2012, we'll continue those great things. And again, thanks for all the support of not only the council, but the staff, which really has been instrumental in making a lot of these successes, you know, come to fruition, and we're confident that'll continue going forward.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for the good work you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Okay, public hearing. I'm gonna open up the first public hearing for consideration of an economic development grant agreement for American Roller Bearing, Sally.
This is a continuation of the economic development conversation that we just began with Scott. You'll, you'll realize and remember that earlier this year, we were very fortunate in announcing an expansion for American Roller Bearing. They have recently purchased the old Rex Nord Building that is located at Chain Drive and are in the process of upfitting that building and, and looking to increase their production capacity in Burke County, and in particular in Morganton, and adding some new additional jobs with that. We were fortunate enough to receive a Rural Center grant to help them with that outfit, and we'll be taking an action, considering action later tonight dealing with that. In addition to that, have before you tonight the opportunity to consider an additional economic development incentive for that expansion, and this is something that the city and county would be doing together, and it is pretty much like other economic development incentives we've considered in the past. It would be a grant to the company for seven years, and each year of those seven consecutive years, the company would need to meet the requirements to qualify for that. Currently, with their projections and what we're looking at for the city, that would qualify them for about just under $6,000 a year in economic development incentive, a little bit more than that in, in Burke County. And tonight, you need to hold your public hearing in order to consider this. The county will be doing the same thing tomorrow night at their regular meeting.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Anyone in the audience would like to speak for or against? Seeing no one, counsel, I'll make the motion. Motion to approve a grant agreement between American Roller Bearing Burke County and the City of Morganton to authorize the mayor and city manager to make any required technical amendments and correct any errors in the grant agreement, and to execute and issue the grant agreement on behalf of the city. Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Other items, consideration of a temporary exemption to the noise ordinance for the Morganton Heights Project, Sally.
You, you have before you tonight for consideration, the city has received requests for a temporary variance in our noise ordinance. As we all know and are very excited about the Morganton Heights Shopping Center, the, we like to refer to it as the old Henry Don Project, the Walmart Project has several names. Without a doubt, the largest project ever undertaken in the city of Morganton, at least in my tenure here, and probably forever, i- is underway, and there's a lot of activity out there. They are getting ready to move into more of a construction phase now that the demolition is coming to an end, and you have created, rightly so, an ordinance that is set up to help the staff, public safety and, and staff members to make sure that we guard against excessive noise and, and things that could be of distraction and of any kind of, you know, threat to the general welfare of the public. And one of the topics that that ordinance covers is construction noise. And currently, what that ordinance says that is before you is that construction noise is regulated and can only happen in certain hours of the day. And right now, that is between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM on weekdays, and between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM on weekends and holidays, and that's except for some emergency work or something may happen, and that relates to construction noise that could happen in an area where it's reasonably expected that it could interfere in a residential area to, to cause them some, some issues. We do have a residential area that is near this site and near this project. We have received a requi- We have received a request from the contractor to ask that we consider a temporary variance. The variance that's being asked for, and I think we have some folks here tonight that could talk about the details if, if you need more, is about a four-month period. That would go somewhere from around late March, early April timeframe to late July. And that would be during really what is going to be the earth-moving portion of the project. Have received and you have included in your packet, the proposal is for this four-month period for basically to have a twenty-four hour a day operation with, with some breaks for mealtimes and changing of shifts and that sort of thing. No work on Sundays and normally unless there's a weather issue or something unusual, only one shift on Saturday. Also a commitment included in that to make every effort to concentrate the night work during this time period to be as far from the residential areas as possible and still get the work done. This is necessary. We have been told by the developers, by the project managers, the, the construction company to get the project in on time. Any kind of delay or not looking at some schedule like this, it's estimated adds about a hundred days, somewhere around three and a half months to an extension to getting the first part of the project done. That's the request. Like I said, we have some folks that can talk about some more details if you would like to do that.
What are your wishes, council?
I'll make the motion to approve variance to allow earth-moving operations beyond normal permitted hours between the end of March and end of July and to direct Chief Talbert to execute necessary documents for the variance.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any, anybody want to say anything in the audience or any discussion from the council members? Okay. To have a motion, have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What we're doing is giving Mark Talbert, chief, the authority to issue the temporary variances. Okay. Consideration of an authorizing resolution supporting the application of a certified local government funds on behalf of Western Piedmont Community College, Sally.
We are fortunate tonight to have an item. What we do best here is partnerships with, with other entities and, and work together to make our community a better place for all of us. And tonight we have an opportunity to consider a partnership with Western Piedmont and I think we have a presentation to kind of give you the details of that.
Yes, and Chad, if you would pull up my PowerPoint. Good evening, I'm Mary Charlotte Safrid and I'm dean of the Humanities and Social Sciences at Western Piedmont.
Welcome.
And I have with me Courtney Long, who is the coordinator of our Professional Crafts Program, and Lisa Miller, who is the director of Resource Development at Western Piedmont. And Dr. Burnett and the senior staff would be here as well, but they are meeting with the Board of Trustees this evening.
Little technical help we had to.
Oh, okay. You're not looking at anything yet. That's okay. Glad you could fix it. I wouldn't know what to do.
It was.
While that's coming up, this is an opportunity for us to apply for a CLG grant, a certified local government grant on behalf of Western Piedmont to hopefully get them some funds to do some study for some future development on the campus.
Well, I want to thank you again for allowing us to be here this evening. We're really looking forward, forward to this partnership and as you just said, this is to apply for a historic preservation feasibility study so that we can do some exciting things on our campus that we think will benefit our school and also our city and our county.
You may have to do it without technical support.
Oh, no.
She probably has pretty pictures.
Well, they're small. I've got pretty pictures. Oh, there they go. I don't know. Well, I can talk without the pictures if I have to.
You go right ahead. And our monitors are off too, Chad.
Okay.
Do we have a little thing come that says technical difficulties, please stand by.
Well, as our first slide shows, it would show an interesting picture that juxtaposes a picture from, a photograph from over a hundred years ago that shows Broughton Hospital patients working on the hospital farm. Next to it is a picture of our sustainable agriculture students working that same property today. And the title of the slide is Getting Back to Our Roots because we believe that figuratively and literally, we are getting back to our roots with our plans for the property that Western Piedmont received. In the year 2000, we received over two hundred acres of property that was formerly part of Broughton Hospital. And the property that we received was basically the heart of the farm buildings and the farmland. And again, I'm sorry, I can't, I can email this to you so you can see some of these photographs, but I understand technical difficulties, I have them all the time. But anyway.
We hope the public's hearing you.
Yes. I want to talk a little bit about history because after all, we are applying for a historic preservation grant and also the, the property and the structures that Western Piedmont now has, that was formerly part of Broughton Hospital, have played a vital role in the history of our community and we hope will continue to play a vital role in the future of our community. Now, just to go back a little bit in history, by the way, I'm a history teacher at Western Piedmont, but this is fascinating history and a little bit of it you may know and you may not know all of it. But anyway, in the eighteen seventies, the General Assembly ordered that the western North Carolina insane asylum be built here in Morganton. And they hired a renowned architect, Samuel Sloan, to develop plans for this hospital. And Mr. Sloan, from the very beginning, when he started developing plans for the hospital, entered into the plans, things were very, to use a modern word, sustainable, innovative and creative. And in fact, in the first building that was built, the heart of the hospital, the Avery Building as we call it today, he did things over a hundred years ago such as, okay, such as use the bricks that the hospital's made out of are made from Catawba River clay that was, that were made by local prisoners. He built underneath the hospital huge tunnels. Now, I know all of you have probably heard stories about those tunnels. I've always heard kind of spooky things about those tunnels. Well, Mr. Sloan, over a hundred years ago, wanted the hospital's patients to have fresh air, so in those tunnels with huge fans, he created a system that basically circulated air to the patients long before there was air conditioning. Also cisterns to collect water and all kinds of innovative things that we want to continue to do on this property as we continue on with our plans. Now, perhaps the most interesting innovative part of the hospital has to do with the type of treatment that began with the sup, first superintendent, is it coming up? The first superintendent, Dr. Patrick Murphy. Dr. Murphy, over a hundred years ago, created a treatment plan called the Colony Method and this is a fascinating treatment plan that, in which he believed that patients who were able should have a job on the hos, in working at the hospital. Something that they felt good about, something that they excelled in, and he believed that was very important. In fact, I'll quote from him, he said that this method of treatment, employment and amusement are in fact the best treatment for psychiatric patients. Again, this is years before anyone else was doing these things in most of the country. Broughton, Morganton, ahead of the game, innovative in this very interesting type of treatment method. Now, women, for example, could knit, they could make quilts that the hospital would use. Most of the male patients actually worked on the growing hospital farm and they could pick what they wanted to do on the farm and many of them were actually housed, well, that's me, my PowerPoint, sorry. The North Colony Building, which some of you may have seen on that property, that was how, that was built to house these men as they worked on the growing farm. There were craftsmen, staff and patients who did things such as our Professional Crafts Program, students in that program do today. They make metal objects and tools, they make furniture for the hospital. So, again, we're talking about things that have a long history on this hos, on the hospital grounds. Eventually, it was amazing setup where when there were over three thousand patients and staff on the hospital, this farm was so thriving that every bit of food that patients and staff ate came from that farm. And it was truly amazing. It was a beautiful setup and over a hundred years ago, people were coming to Morganton as cultural tourists because on Sunday afternoon, these people would, in their horse and buggies, drive to the Broughton Campus and have picnics and tour the grounds, look at the cattle and the orchards. Very popular was the Pig Hotel. So, again, cultural tourism, that's a very important thing to our city now and the hospital grounds were actually a big cultural tourist site back then. And again, oh, I, I have wonderful photographs that, that are a hundred years old that can show you some of the wonderful things that they were doing on this property back then. Unfortunately, the colony system, this innovative psychiatric method of care came to an end about the nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties, probably because of changing ideas about how to treat mental patients. There was still some farming that went on with patients up until about the sixties and seventies. In fact, I often meet people in the community that, that helped work on the farm. Anybody in here worked on the Broughton Farm at some point? Well, usually I have no people who worked with patients on the farm. But it came to an end and again, we received this property in the year 2000 and we have big plans for this property, some of which has already been implemented. We built a structure there that today houses our basic skills program. We also started our sustainable agriculture program on this property, but we also have these beautiful structures, particularly the silo barn, that we would like to develop for our Professional Crafts Program. They, a magnificent structure that sits on a hill, you can see Table Rock, just a beautiful place that one day we envision schoolchildren coming to this property to learn about how crafts are made, how you can raise your own food, to learn about the history of their community. But anyway, we would like to take the Sally Barn and rehabilitate it in a historically correct manner to house our Professional Crafts Program. And I want to tell you a little bit about our Professional Crafts Program because it really is an amazing program. We have a Professional Crafts Clay and Wood Program and they are thriving. Unfortunately, they are housed in a space on our main campus that is rather inadequate and actually too small. We've also been given approval to bring down a sculpture program, which would be clay and metal. We can't start that program yet because we simply don't have adequate space to do so. But we have this thriving craft program that goes back to the history of our community. You know, a lot of the crafts that they're learning to do are crafts that were always an important part of our county and our economy. But they're not just learning how to be good craftsmen. This, these programs also teach them how to be good businessmen. They learn small business skills, how to develop a marketing plan, how to develop a business plan. So, what we're doing in this program is really helping us economically, teaching people how to be efficient small businessmen that can attract people here to buy their products. So, this is what we want to do in the Silo Barn. We want to bring our Professional Crafts Program there and we think this structure is perfect for it. If you've, if you've seen it, it's a long barn with two big silos and there's a T part and the long part is very open and airy and it's plenty of room to bring our craft program and also to have visitors. Again, we, we see this as a place where people will want to come learn about our history and what we're doing now. So, we have that, we have wonderful plans for this, for the Silo Barn and we just need help getting it going and that is what we're asking the city to help us do. This feasibility study will help us determine what we can do with this structure, which again, we think is going to be the beginning of a wonderful, wonderful situation that will bring more people to, to Morganton, will train our students, will educate our students and the, the community and it's a win-win situation. So, thank you so much for considering this and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Miller, who's going to tell you a little bit more about the grant.
Thank you, Mary Charlotte, and I'm going to be brief, just wanted to give you a quick overview of the grant logistics. First, thank you for allowing us to speak and for your consideration of being a certified local government who would act on the behalf of the college to allow us to submit this grant. The opportunity comes from the Federal Historic Preservation Fund and this grant is facilitated through the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office. These grants are due mid-February, the awards would be announced in April with projects to be, beginning implementation in the summer, wrapping up in August of 2013. If we weren't be, if we were able to apply, the request would be for eleven thousand seven hundred dollars and the college would pledge six thousand three hundred dollars in matching funds, making up for a total project cost of eighteen thousand dollars. If awarded and if the city would agree to be a partner, this would enable the college to take its first step in the Silo Barn rehabilitation process. And also to highlight, one requirement of this grant is to ensure that this feasibility study complies with the North Carolina Historic Preservation Goals and the National Park Service's standards and guidelines for rehabilitating historic buildings. On behalf of the college, we would like to thank Russ Cochran, Lee Anderson, the other wonderful city personnel who have guided us through this process, which was a new one for me, and also to the City of Morganton's Historic Preservation Commission and for their support. And also, we wish to thank you, the city council, for your consideration and we hope that we're able to be partners in this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to adopt an, an authorizing resolution endorsing the application for eleven thousand seven hundred dollars of certified local government funds on behalf of Western Piedmont Community College and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to the CLG application and implementation if awarded.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I'll just be sure, this is a pass-through?
Correct. This is a pass-through grant. We would basically be handling the, the financial piece of that on, on behalf of Western Piedmont. They would be working with the day-to-day details of the project with the architect, the feasibility study, those kinds of things.
One question for ladies. J. Iverson Riddle Center has a craft program in existence and they have their sales area. Are you anyway going to be affiliated with the J. Iverson Riddle Center on your project?
We don't have any plans at this time. The, the wonderful part of this project is, as Mary Charlotte mentioned, we've had this land since 2000 and we haven't been able to move forward. So, this feasibility study will allow us the opportunity of, of making more concrete decisions going forward and so we'll make sure to include that consideration to our committee.
We would certainly work with any, any group, either with our students helping train or in any way that would benefit the community. We're all about working with everybody.
Now, the barn that you're speaking of, I know generally where it is. Now, there is another barn that I assume is probably Deaf School property, the big barn. That is not part of the two hundred acres, or is it?
Well, if, if it's the barn I think you're talking about, it's in between Western Piedmont and the Deaf School on the hill. Now, that, that is not on our property.
Okay, thank you.
And the dollar amount has changed from your original information because we found out in the process that the way the program works, the local match was less, so we could actually apply for more grant money, which is why it changed from the ten thousand eight in your first materials to the eleven thousand seven hundred.
Is there any possibility that that might change slightly again so that we need a little flexibility so that we do not have to bring this back to the council?
No, I was, I was able to speak with the historic state, the state Historic Preservation Office and they, they said that that amount is official and would be fine.
I mean, because if we do, we just need some flexibility to adjust the amount if the APC.
I think this is the final.
Okay.
But we appreciate the consideration of flexibility.
Okay, all in, I had a motion, I made the motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Sorry we had a little bit of video problems, but we generally needed a day ahead. Sorry, we had a little bit of video problems, but we generally needed a day ahead and that may be the problem of not getting it a day ahead is for Chad to work on it. Anyway, next time it'll work out better. Thank you very much.
We did vote on the amended motion.
I did.
Eleven, seven hundred instead of the ten eight.
Yes, sir. Consideration to allocate a portion of the city HUD funds for the purpose of creating a new entre, entrepreneurial grant competition in association with the Burke Entrepreneurs and Business Owners. Sally, Bebo.
This is an opportunity, you will recall that as part of our CDBG monies, as in part of our entitlement monies, you have set aside in that plan some dollars to use toward promoting entrepreneurialism in getting small businesses started and helping small businesses to expand. We've had a program that we've used for a little while that has been a grant loan program and, and we have awarded several of those in the last six months or so. This is an idea and something that Lee Anderson has been an active member of the Bebo Group, meeting with them, and that stands for Burke Entrepreneurs and Business Owners. It's a grassroots network of professionals, private business owners, educational organizations, and some governmental representatives that have been meeting and networking and working together in order to promote small business in, in the county and to create new jobs for quite some time. This is a proposal for you to consider within that same amount of dollars out of the HUD monies that you look at towards supporting small business, to do something a little different, to consider an actual grant program. There would be no loan piece of this, this would be an outright grant. It would be a grant of $50,000. It would be a competitive process and it's a process in which we would work through partnership with the Bebo in evaluating the proposals, the requests that we would get and making that award. Lee is here tonight and can talk to you a little bit about the proposal for how to make that a competitive program and a little bit about the timeline.
Good evening. Briefly, I do not have a PowerPoint presentation luckily tonight. The folks with the Bebo organization is really a, a good symbol and, and way to create new business opportunities in our, in our community. It's been enjoyable to work with this group, but when you bring bankers and small business owners and chamber people and governmental officials all together in a concerted effort to try to create new entrepreneurs in your community, that's a good thing. And that's the way, we talked about that a little bit in the council retreat, that's the way the future looks for us. We need to do those kind of things to be successful. In that effort, trying to grow homegrown businesses or to try to create businesses that start here and grow here, you've got a much better chance of keeping those folks long-term. Morganton was built on the success of the furniture industry and the textile industry and those businesses were here and they grew here. They, they started here, they grew here and expanded here. It's harder for them to leave your community. So in this effort, we're also trying to find folks that are in this community or maybe folks that are in surrounding communities that are trying to start new businesses. And we want to create a larger business with this pool of money. How many of you have, have seen Shark Tank on the, on TV where you have entrepreneurs that actually present their concept and they have to sell that concept to a set of investors? This was kind of what we're trying to do here is the group with Bebo will work with the individual business owner or groups of businessmen that would come and compete for this funding. They would compete against one another. We would help network them to bankers and to other groups that can help expand their business plan almost like an incubator to give them the best presentation to compete for these funds. So through the next six to eight months, working with the entrepreneurs, we hope to have many different ideas come to the table. Only one person obviously, or one business is going to win this at the end of the, at the end of September. But what it also does is it helps the businesses do a better job at developing a business plan that are in competition. It may help us identify other funding sources that can help those businesses be successful and to start businesses well because we have other programs that are available to them through BDI and some other folks. So I think the whole idea here is to create an entrepreneurial spirit in the community, which that's what, again, that's what it's going to take to, to create new businesses in our community is to let folks know that if you have an idea for a business or you're in a operation that can receive investors and be, be a potential growth company in our area to, to take part in the competition. And if you have an idea for a new company, maybe you have a business now that you want to create a new business. It's open, just for startup businesses is what it's for. But if you have existing business experience, that's obviously going to rank you higher in the, in the points ratings in the competition. And this is not just a city competition, again, it's to partner and network with the other folks that are in the county, folks from Valdez and other folks are being involved. But it has to be a business located inside the city limits of Morganton in order to obtain the funding.
Thank you, Lee. Appreciate it. Counsel, what do you wish?
Make a motion to approve lording $50,000 in HUD funds to a Bebo-sponsored entrepreneurial grant competition.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to add, this, Lee, this is for HUD funds that are part of next year's budget. Is that correct?
Actually, HUD funds are bank initiatives.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of utility relocation agreements with North Carolina Department of Transportation and Enola Road. Sally.
For years, literally, we have been working with the Department of Transportation on the plans for the widening of Enola Road and finally have before you tonight two utility relocation agreements that relate to that project. And that is for the widening portion between Arnold Drive to South Sterling Street. We have two different agreements because we have two different utility situations. The first is an agreement for the relocation of the electric distribution lines and some make-ready work that we're going to need to do in order to accommodate that. This is an agreement for a project that is estimated and again, there aren't bids on this yet because it's not completely designed, so these are estimates of $758,000. And what is happening in that agreement, the way that this works, DOT will be reimbursing us for that work. So that is an agreement where they are actually going to be paying us back for the work that happens in that. The second agreement before you deals with the water and sewer line relocation, very similar to 105. We have some relocation of those two utilities that the rules are a little different on and we are required to bear the cost of relocating those. The estimate for that is $438,000. That too would work just like the 105 project. We would be making those payments to DOT over a three-year period and that would begin July 1st of 2013. So the first payment would be in 1314 fiscal year.
Okay. First, is she, is Becky doing okay? She need a break. About through.
She's fine.
Motion to approve a utility relocation agreement, electric distribution lines between the DOT and agency of the state of North Carolina and the city of Morganton to authorize the mayor, city manager to execute an issue, the agreement on behalf of the city and to make an issue on behalf of the city. Any additional technical amendments or changes to the agreement as reasonably required by the Department of Transportation.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Do we have the personnel and, and equipment to do this or do we farm this out?
The majority of it will have to be a contractor. We will do some of the underground part ourselves, but the majority of the relocation will have to be a contractor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next motion.
Make a motion to approve a utility agreement for water and sewer lines between the Department of Transportation and agency of the state of North Carolina and the city of Morganton and to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute and issue the agreement on behalf of the city and to make an issue on behalf of the city, any technical amendments or changes to the agreement as reasonably required by the Department of Transportation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second, any discussion of this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of a project budget ordinance for economic development. Yeah. A project for American roller bearing and case farms.
We have already alluded to tonight that we were successful with two applications earlier in this fiscal year for Rural Center reuse grants, one for case farms and one for American roller bearing. Now that Rural Center is getting their paperwork together on these, we need to adopt a project ordinance, which is basically the budget for the project. These two will flow through the city of Morganton and all of the accounting and the grant receipts and the payouts to the company will come through Morganton. The one that we are establishing for case farms is in the amount of $525,000 and that includes the local match, which is required. The one for American roller bearing is $504,000. That also includes the local match for the administration. If you recall, the city and the county have agreed to share the local match 50/50. And the formula for these is based on the number of new jobs created for each project.
Move to approve a project budget ordinance for Rural Center grant for case farms in the amount of $525,000 and for American roller bearing in the amount of $504,000.
Second. We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve a budget amendment to appropriate the city share of the local matching in the amount of $24,500 and receive $24,500 from Burke County.
Second. Have a motion, second. Any discussion of this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of appointment to the Burke County Public Library Board of Trustees. And we have, Steve is going to be retiring from that board. Will you give your flash check back to his mail to you? And we're going to appoint John Cantrell to take his place. Second. See, is that, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of appointment to the Morganton Housing Authority. And that is a mayor's appointment and I'm going to reappoint, reappoint James Moore. Last one is consideration of appointments to the Fireman's Relief Fund, another high-paying job. And it looks like that's going to be Karen, let's see, Karen Duncan and John Campbell. And we're going to reappoint them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I'm going to, any items, anything from the council members? I'm going to call for a closed session to discuss economic development and personnel matter and there will not be any resolution. We'll come back and give our news media. No action.